All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We will have our invocation from Dr. Cherry and forgive me if I mispronounce Estelle Homi, Travelers Rest Missionary Baptist Church. And Pastor, when you come, could you please pray for our officers who were injured on Sunday in the shooting, as well as the Henry County Officer, who also sustained some injuries? And please pray for the law enforcement, the public safety officials in its whole, you know, for our state, county, and country in this world, because we are definitely in some trying times, so we need prayer. So if you would, pray for us. It'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would all, please stand with me.
Let us bow. O most holy and gracious God, we thank you for this day, this time, and this season. We thank you for the purpose of this moment, this meeting where minds have come together to make this place a better place, as you have commanded us. God, we ask that you touch those who've been injured. We ask that you touch those families who are worried about their loved one. We ask that you bless not just this county, but all surrounding counties for people who are putting their lives on the line to make us feel safe, whole, and complete. God, if you don't do anything else, we ask that you give us a peace in this time of uncertainty and chaos. Give us a peace that surpasses all understanding. And God, if you do that, we'll be so careful to give your name all the glory, the honor, and the praise, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our July 18th, 2023 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments at this time?
Yes, Madam Clerk, we need to have an emergency add-on. It is for a budget amendment for, in the amount of $412,847. The urgency in this is we have it on the agenda as a resolution to adopt, but we didn't have the money moved to it. And is that about correct?
Yeah, it's item number four.
Oh, it's item number four. So we need to transfer the money to be able to do the work once we adopt it. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, yeah, this is an add-on.
Oh.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick. Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. And that will, I'm asking for that to be on the consent agenda.
Okay, I have something.
Are there any others?
Yes, I have something. I would like to pull number four, to put it on the regular agenda.
Okay, so with that in mind, Mr. Reed, I would like to revise my motion to, well, my request to have it placed on the regular agenda instead of the consent agenda.
Well, you can.
I don't need to revise my motion. I just need to make a motion to place it on the regular agenda.
You don't have to even do a motion, because you all have agreed that you can just move it.
Okay, that's right. It's already been adopted. That's a good point. Okay, Madam Clerk, I'm asking that the emergency item be placed on the regular agenda.
I'm clear.
All right, any others? All right, here and none, I will ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
The board will now consider the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Are there any questions on any other items? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous.
Our next item is item number four, Recommendation for Award ITB 22-106, presented by our Central Services Director, Carol Rogers.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. The recommendation is for Award ITB 22-106, which is Beautification of Landscaping and Rightaways. It is a service contract, which is an annual contract for Clayton County. The recommendation is for multiple award for the lowest responsive and responsible bidders, which are Russell Landscaping LLC, located in Sugar Hill, Georgia, and Mariana Enterprise LLC. Their DBA, Ed Castro Landscaping, Inc., located in Lake Bluff, Illinois, but they do have a Georgia location. Also, funding is available through the county's general fund, the bid tabulation summary, department's recommendation memo, and the agreements are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the interim chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motions, there's a second.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Beautification and landscaping.
Yes.
Is fine, and I, yeah, I need to direct it to the warden.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Warden Nelson.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners.
Yes, Warden, I'm trying to figure out how this is going to be different than what we have now, because as I mentioned to you, I ride around with my little riding, my little pad, riding down streets that have trash, and that's my big thing. I mean, I hope we can do both at the same time, so we can clean the county up, but I have a real problem with the trash, trash pickup or whatever. I'm steady calling, you know, calling Tina, you know, put this on the list, put that on the list, and that's like, if I go out, I'm writing down the name of the street that has trash. So will you tell me the difference in what we're getting now, as opposed to just the grass cutting? Because I was looking at Frank Bailey Center last week, well, even today, and they would, they cut the grass, but it needed the trim. So is this supposed to beautify that kind of thing, or how does this work?
Yes, Commissioner, this bid, which Central Services did an outstanding job, was a lot of patience with me going through this. This bid will cover all the county buildings that we currently have, with the exception of parks and recreation, and it also does include right-of-way roads. However, I've selected several right-of-way roads that we would be taking care of ourselves. For instance, Tara Boulevard, which we're under contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation for. So these would take the focus off of us having to deal with the county buildings and give us an additional grass crew out on the right-of-ways and the roads. And of course, with that comes the trash pickup. We are doing better. As I mentioned to you before the meeting, Commissioner, we have been able to hire back an outside detail officer, which is great, because we can just, well, we did, we just put him right back out on the road, so he picked up like he hasn't even been gone, and we added another outside detail officer, and that should give us four full grass crews. We are slowly getting, getting positions filled again. It's still, it's still lagging behind, but it is better than what we were. And the summary of the grass service for, it also includes the libraries, it includes the police department, senior services, and all of our main buildings are broken down into tiers as to which ones need grass attention a little bit better than others, and it's the best we could calculate based on what we're currently cutting. There's also programming built in here for beautification, putting in trees and shrubbery and kind of sprucing up some of the buildings. We do that on an à la carte basis with this particular bid. Selected two bidding, or two companies, two vendors, because one is lower in one area and the other one's higher, and vice versa, so that way we can choose the lower price to keep the cost down.
Okay, so now with the beautification, does that mean that they will be edging and trimming?
Yes, ma'am.
In all beautification? Okay.
That has been one of my focuses to these streets, that we have to trim the sidewalks, make sure they're clear, clear the grass that's growing up along the concrete walls, and present it like it's, like it's your own house.
Okay, that's good, thank you. But now, I'm concerned about Riveter Road, 314, 138, 85. Those are the roads that when I'm riding back and forth or wherever, and I'm looking, even now, my granddaughter say, "Nana, there's trash." You know, she started, you know, telling me what, of course, she doesn't have to, but she knows that that's what I'm gonna do. So that's what I want us to focus on also. I think at one time, there was a plan where we could give small businesses a chance to do some work in the county, that we would hire a small business for each district, and they would concentrate on whatever roads or problem roads or whatever, and that would help us to keep, you know, the county clean.
Commissioner Hambrick, I don't recall that, is that something that was done many years ago?
That was something that was done, when did you all start, the committee? I was on one of the Zoom calls and made that suggestion, and it may have even been made here once, but, you know, I've been talking that for a while now.
We do work with organizations to, to come together and pick up trash in certain areas on the street, plus we use our community service workers on the weekend.
Well, I'm just thinking that would be a way for us to help our small businesses, our small landscaping business.
It would, yes, ma'am.
You know, just let somebody clean district, one, two, each district have their workforce.
I just, it baffles me how we can clean a street and the next day it's trashed.
That's why we wanted to have a company to, or a small business, to concentrate on each district, you know, per district, instead of somebody trying to cover the whole county and all. But again, I would like to see that.
Yes, ma'am.
At least you all would discuss that, I would appreciate it. You know, do you all still have your meetings?
The, the meetings on the community meetings?
Community Improvement.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, if, well, is the next meeting a Zoom meeting or in person?
I'll have to check and see.
Well, let me know, I would like to attend.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
Thank you, Commissioner Hambrick, for those questions. It's definitely, you covered some of the questions I have, and thank you for your answers. I do believe that this board has the ability to bring before the board a motion to make that happen, so I am already letting you know that I'm in support of that, and hopefully we will be able to bring that forth, whether it's you, Commissioner, or myself, it doesn't matter who, but we need to get the trash cleaned up. And obviously, we know that $412,000 isn't going to do so much. So there's definitely still room for those small businesses to come in and help clean up those smaller areas. It's all about where we're going to allocate the funds within our budget, and we can reallocate those funds to make it happen. I'm in support of that, definitely. Additionally, I would hope that we can utilize Trees Atlanta and UGA to help that money go a little bit further, and one of the things that I've been asking for outside of just picking up the trash is for us to evaluate a process to deal with what you're stating. We can keep dealing with the symptoms of a problem, or we can deal with the problem itself, and as a board, we have to decide if we want to fix the problem, and we got to begin to catch these people who are doing this mass dumping. It's not fair to the businesses, it's not fair to the residents, so I'm hoping that when we do put it on the agenda for the small businesses, that we can look at giving you additional cameras to put out there, because it's my understanding of using one or two cameras and having to move them around, and that's something I too have brought up to this board. So we can keep spending money to go out, like you said, right after a dump, or we can curtail the behavior and help people to understand you can't do that in our county. So I'm willing to put that on the agenda, along with, the only thing I ask is that we spray those weeds, because what we're calling grass a lot of times is the overgrown weeds. So I'm glad to hear our buildings are going to be brought up, because I've driven around to, not only the trash, but what gets me is our very own buildings. We would have to be cited for some of the way our buildings look, so I'm glad we're gonna fix this.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Franklin, and I agree with you on the weed control. We were at one point talking with Mr. Matarco about what kind of weed, chemical that we can use, that we can be involved with. I'm not sure whether it's something that we have to be specially licensed for to, to apply it, but I would see, I envision a truck coming right behind the grass crews when they clean up and just spraying the weeds and also spraying along the gutter lines, because it really, really does grow there, and you know, we had a lot of issues with the plant river.
Gutters being clogged and flooding.
And I think we've got that road okay now, Commissioner, hopefully so, the grass will be back.
Yes, well, I'll be putting it on the agenda. We got, it sounds like we got two votes. Let's see where it goes.
All right, then any other questions?
Yes, I think, I remember that item coming up, but I want to say we had talked about putting a cleaning crew in each district, but that was pre-COVID, and I think COVID is what began to take that away, where we had to combine them and go to one. And my other thought is this, if that's the case, then possibly look at how we, to bring back Keep Clayton Beautiful, in order to begin to look at that and figure out how to align that to get this done.
Commissioner Davis, the board gave us the positions to fund a crew in each district. We're still pretty short in the outside details. As we add those positions back and start, we have to get them into the, to the prison, train them, and then we can push out our seasoned people. We will start getting back to full strength and having one crew per, per district. That, that was something that you, the board funded the positions for, and we want to make sure that we get that back.
I would like to say, oh, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute, were you finished, Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
I would like to say, I would like to commend the warden and Police Chief, Chief Roberts, for this committee, because it is a great substitute for the thousands of dollars for a keep something beautiful. And you all are doing that kind of thing, it's just that, you know, I really would like to see us do the district.
Chief, Chief Roberts facilitates that meeting very well, it's a quality of life meeting.
And that, those meetings were after the pandemic also, that we did Zoom calls and all, so it was not pre-pandemic, not from my conversation with you all, so.
I sure hope we'll get back to normal here soon. Looks like we're headed that way.
This too shall pass, as they say, but let me just echo sentiments that Commissioner Davis touched on with Keep Clayton Beautiful initiative. This is a community, a societal problem, an issue. Yes, we have illegal dumping, but we also have a lot of littering, this little trash that you see here and there on, off the on-ramps and off-ramps, all that's people just throwing cups and paper out of the window. Keep Clayton Beautiful initiative was to educate the community, as well as to partner with some of our businesses and other organizations, to be able to volunteer to go out and help pick up this trash collectively, collectively, not only just the government, but everybody. We can get this county where it needs to be, so I'm just adding that out.
In fact, let me just say this publicly as well. I sit over looking at Jean Claude, and I've seen him several mornings, out picking up trash on the roadways by himself, to put him in, to put him in trash bags. So it's all about a community effort, yes.
We, we have several elderly ladies that, that get out on the street and pick up the trash and.
Miss Dewberry.
Yes, ma'am. And I keep in constant contact with them, and they'll let me know if there's something that they need our attention, and, and we get right out there and take care of them.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Franklin.
I just got one more thing, we just need to do it. I don't care if we call it Beautification Clayton, Keep Clayton Beautiful, Clayton Responsible, the bottom line is as long as the job is getting done, I think that's what this board can agree upon, as long as the job is getting done and we're not just hanging our hats on a title or a subject line and hold people accountable to do it. So thank you for the work that you do, but also thank you for the work that's major, I think it's Major Amy does as well, and your crew does, so let's make it happen. I'm ready to put it on the agenda, let's do it.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Commissioner.
I just want to say thank you again, you know I'm a big advocate for keeping Clayton clean, and again, if we want, if we want to have people to come into Clayton, such as restaurants, hotels, things of that nature, what they do is they drive through Clayton County to see if they want to have a business here, and when we have trash and we don't have the grass cut, that makes us, that makes us look like, you know, we don't have ourselves together, so I want to thank you for this. Please make sure, like Commissioner Franklin said, let's just get the job done, I'm tired of talking about it, let's move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right.
Our next item is.
No, we haven't taken a vote yet. Jumping the gun there, Madam Clerk.
She's like, that was long.
All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Next.
Our next item is Budget Amendment 2-2. This is presented by our interim chief financial officer, Stacy Merritt.
Did you need to take the resolution first or the budget?
We just took the resolution.
Oh, that was, okay, carry on.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chairman. What I have is Budget Amendment 2-2. This is to appropriate funds to assist with beautification of landscaping and right-of-ways and services annual contract. This is the fund item number four, which you just heard, in the amount of $412,847.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Franklin, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, any questions?
No, but I, please forgive me, I forgot to say thank you to Captain McDonald, he responds on the weekend about picking up trash. Forgive me, Cap.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is item number 23, Resolution 2023-159, Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Board. Resolution 2023-159, a resolution authorizing Clayton County to exempt certain county-owned vehicles from the requirement to affix a county decal or seal on the front doors of such vehicles, to authorize the chairman to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution or for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions?
Not so much a question, I'm gonna vote against it ahead of time, because I think the county needs to know if certain vehicles may be sitting up at places late at night, and we need to identify all vehicles, and to be quite honest with you, I find it interesting that our board has tripped up over the old law that we have not been following because of the semantics that kind of go on at times, so just wanted to put that on record. I think that all county vehicles need to be identified, and we did pay a lot of money on that logo, so let's see it.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
For one, it passes. Next, Madam Clerk.
Our next items are board appointments, starting with item number 24.
First board appointment is to the Library Board, Dr. Rump Carter, resigned from the Library Board, existing term will expire on November 2nd, 2024. Commissioner Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to appoint Ms. Ebonyke Miller to the Library Board for District One.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Next board appointment is also to the Library Board, Carolyn Boone's term on the Library Board will expire on July 21st, 2023. New term is for three years, expiring July 21st, 2026. Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to appoint Mr. Dwayne Fabian.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Next board appointment is License Review Board, Armon Ashby's term on the License Review Board expires August 6th, 2023. New term is for four years, expiring August 6th, 2027. Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, I would like to reappoint Mr. Armon Ashby to this board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next board appointment is also to the License Review Board, Dr. Carol Braddy's term on License Review Board expires August 6th, 2023. New term is four years, expiring on August 6th, 2027. Commissioner Davis.
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and reappoint, reappoint Dr. Carol H. Braddy to that board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Franklin, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
The board will now consider the zoning hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have 10 minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the 10-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profan, or derogatory language will not be permitted. Our first item is item number 28, BOC 2210-0255, which is a request to amend the future land use map category from MX to HDR.
Good evening. This is a request by Battle Law PC, 41535, Highway 138, Jonesburg, Georgia, 30236. The request is of future land use map category, change from mixed use to identity residential. For single-family tax town home development, said property consisting of 4.84 acres is located between North McDonough Street and Stockbridge Road, is in the East Rust Highway 130 corridor overlay district, and is further known as parcel 12047 CF001. Staff's recommendation was denial, Zach's recommendation was denial.
Advocate present.
Good evening. Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562, Habershamet, Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, 30084. I'm here representing Rockhaven Homes this evening. There are multiple applications that we have before you here this evening. I know we didn't combine them all, but we will be going through the process for each one of them as we go through the hearings tonight, so thank you.
Referenced to this one, would you like to reserve any minutes for a rebut?
Sure, I'll save like three minutes.
Three minutes, okay.
There you have it. Maybe I better put my glasses back on so I can sneak in. We have projects on both sides of the street here off of Highway 138. We are seeking the rezoning from RS 110 and MX to, actually RM, not to the PUD, as indicated here. These two particular properties that we're dealing with, and I know that we're, I'm only fixating on one right now, but both of them right now are across the highway from each other, zoned RS 110 and MX on one of the parcels as well. The land use designation on one, however, is MDR with some MX mixed, MXD from a land use perspective mixed in with it, and that's actually prevalent on both sides of the street. What we have proposed is to develop this project for a townhome community on both sides, and we believe that the townhome community is consistent with the land use from the perspective that the county has made it very clear that this corridor was intended for mixed-use development, and that mixed-use development requires a higher intensity of use. So what we're looking at are, are developments that would be along this corridor that would incorporate either some type of commercial component, along with a higher intensity residential. incorporate either some type of commercial component along with a higher intensity residential use, which normally we would be looking at based on the number of units per acre, would be some type of apartment complex. Normally, what we would consider a kind of a standard suburban apartment complex, but that is not what the applicant is going for in this particular instance. What they have asked for is a town home community of fee simple town homes that would be sold. All of them would be on individually platted lots. Those units would sell in the low to mid three hundreds. There has been some interest even due to some recent occurrences that maybe some of these units would be earmarked for police and fire and teachers and others that would be looking for homes in this area. We know that the price points on homes has increased drastically over the years and made it much more expensive for people to enter into this market. And so we believe that this product would certainly lend itself towards more individuals being able to become homeowners in the area. We think that the type and style of the homes is very indicative of what you're seeing within communities. And the product that Rockhaven is proposing is one that has been very successful, and that is a very quality product that we are looking at. The units themselves in size will be between fourteen, one thousand four hundred and fifty square feet to one thousand eight hundred and fifty with three bedrooms. Amenity areas, again, starting in the low three hundreds. While the community will not be gated, it will again be managed by a homeowners association with a professional management group. Additionally, we know that this project will not come online if approved until sometime in twenty twenty-five. And that leads me to a couple of comments. I know that we have had a number of conversations with Commissioner Davis with regards to this site. And we are very challenged with this project mainly because we believe that it is appropriate for the location. There's been comments that we have received about concerns regarding the county's ability right now to be able to have this kind of density along the one, Highway one thirty-eight corridor, concerns regarding public safety in terms of the number of E M T, I guess it's E M T, emergency, you know what I'm talking about. Folks come and save a life if you need it, as well as police and fire. And so we are sensitive to that fact and that the county is trying to shore up the ranks, so to speak, in those areas. But we also know that this product is not going to be available until twenty twenty-five, and we would certainly hope that by twenty twenty-five, that kind of issue will have been addressed. We know that the housing market is continuing to move forward. It did not slow in some ways since COVID was over. But what we do know is that this particular piece of property has been on the market for quite some time, and it wasn't until twenty nineteen when my client put the property under contract that anybody even looked at it again. And all have been coming forward with other residential product equal in density, if not more, than what the applicant has in front of them. And so when you look at the current land use and you look at the surrounding development along this corridor, Highway one thirty-eight is designed for this type of development. It is not on an interior residential local corridor. It is on a major arterial road, and that's where you want this kind of product. I am baffled by staff's recommendation of denial because once again, even though medium-density residential is on a part of the property on both sides, it's still a mixed-use corridor. And if you look down the entirety of the one thirty-eight corridor, it's all mixed-use development, and that's density, and that's traffic, and that's people. And people need all the things that you all are concerned about. But if someone came in along here tomorrow, they could develop on that mixed-use parcel the type of density that we're talking about, but they would simply be going vertical instead of being horizontal. And so we think that we would respectfully request, and I know that this has been deferred a number of times, and I'm not looking for a deferral, I'm looking for an approval. I don't know that I'll get that tonight, but nonetheless, I am here to ask for that because I do believe that it is appropriate for the property that we are looking at. We want to be good neighbors. We've tried to address the issues that have been raised by the community, including fencing along the perimeter, having more buffer along the back. Those are things that we would have done anyway, but we certainly want to make sure that we are protecting the residential, single-family detached community behind this project. So again, we would respectfully request for approval. I'm going to say this five more times or four more times. Maybe at one point, somebody will feel me, but until that time, we'll reserve the rest for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we don't have any time remaining for anyone to speak in favor of, so at this time, anyone like to speak in opposition to, please come forward. Excuse me.
And here's my card as well. And I also have some material as well to show for my opposition. But I will get, go ahead and get started. So, good evening. My name is Sydney Elise Borger, and I live and own a home in Mara, Georgia. I'm speaking as someone who grew up in Clayton County. In fact, I grew up quite close to where this development is going to be or proposed to be. And I'm also speaking as a citizen who has invested interests in the growth and economic success of this county. Today, I'm speaking in opposition to this development, as I believe it's selling Clayton County short. Clayton County is currently designated as a Tier One county. The Tier One county designation is the lowest ranking provided by the state of Georgia, and it's based on economic factors like poverty rate, income, unemployment. It's the lowest ranking a county can have on a one-to-four scale. For comparison, Henry County has a tier, is a tier three, Fayette Tier Four, Fulton Tier Three, and DeKalb Tier Four. Out of all of these counties in the metro area, Clayton County is the only Tier One county. So developments like this, the one proposed today, will keep us in this Tier One status rather than elevate us to the Tier Four status that we deserve. Do we need more housing? Absolutely. However, developing more housing without bringing more money into the county is only going to put a burden on our existing resources and increase the tax burden on our residents. In fact, this county has a sales tax leakage problem. Residents are leaving the county to get the goods and services that they need. And honestly, this sales tax leakage problem is supporting our fellow surrounding counties. It's supporting Fayette, Henry, and Fulton, and it's supporting their tax base in allowing them to become Tier Three or to maintain and become Tier Three and Tier Four counties while keeping Clayton County a Tier One. Rather than focusing on developing warehouses and high-density housing, we should explore alternative developments and sustainable developments that will bring money into the county and diversify our housing stock. But what can we do? Because I'm all about solutions. So instead of a high-density townhouse on these parcels, I propose that we maintain this mixed-use zoning designation and develop the property as a mixed-use development. So here I have an image here. This is the beacon. This is, the beacon is located in southeast Atlanta on Grant Street. And this honestly was a former industrial park with six warehouses that was converted into a mixed-use live, work, and play district. And it's right in the middle of a residential community. They have upscale restaurants, coffee shops, entertainment, coworking spaces, and they even added recently some houses. Now, this development is also located in, is also right next to the Belt Line. This is possible in Clayton County. We can do this in Clayton County. Now, I have another image that I want to show. This is an image right here that shows the type of development that we're talking about in Clayton County in the parcels that we're proposing to be high-density townhouses. We can have the upscale dining, the coffee shops, the coworking spaces, retail, maybe even a small footprint grocery store. And housing can definitely be on this property, but they can be smaller footprint housing that supports the needs of our changing population. Additionally, this is located to the International Beach. It's not too far. What we can do is connect the trail system to this development and make our own Clayton County Belt Line. Additionally, there's a martyr station or a martyr bus route that's not too far from this development either. Connect a martyr station to make it more accessible. We have the trail system and the martyr station. Create accessibility. This can be truly an economic generator for our community. We can leverage the traffic from Spivey Splash. People come all over the place to come to Spivey Splash. Why don't they, after have a great day at the beach, come and visit this mixed-use development, eat, have fun, enjoy their time, spend their money in Clayton County. Connect this with downtown Jonesboro. As well, as well as...
Please, please.
As well as businesses in this corridor, too. This will also spur redevelopment around this area. I want to say, available land to build on is scarce. We as a county need to focus on smart development opportunities as well as redevelopment. And the type of development, this type of development can happen anywhere in the county. Therefore, I have a couple of questions. Question number one, why are we giving up valuable land to a development that will not generate any additional revenue and will only increase the burden on the government and the taxpayers? And the second question is, where is the Development Authority in proposing developments that follow the future land use plan set by the Community Development Department? One of the functions of the Development Authority is to work in conjunction with the Community Development Department on proposed developments to ensure we're following future land use plans. In the three years when I worked at the Development Authority, there were no discussions of strategic development projects and following the future land use plan, other than the Roman United fiasco. So what I propose today is to drop our buckets where we are. And as I conclude, I would like to refer to a scripture that inspires me, especially when I think about our county. The scripture is from Second Kings, chapter four, where there was a woman who was in desperate situation and did not know what to do. She sought the help of a prophet named Elisha and asked him for his help. And Elisha said, "What do you have in your house?" Clayton County, we have a lot in our house. Clayton County is accessible. It's affordable, asset-rich, and we are an area primed for growth. Chairman, Commissioners, residents of this county, let us all say no to the rezoning and development of this and drop our buckets so we can invest in Clayton. Thank you.
Mary Helen Woodlock, eight oh oh nine Aloha Drive. I'm just here to speak against the proposal. Thank you, Commissioner Davis, for your attention to this proposal numerous times. We appreciate the denial of the planning and zoning and the zag recommendation. We are concerned about the infrastructure, traffic, the police department being there on the corner, and the bus barn, and just emergency vehicles. We are concerned about the high density of the number of townhomes that are proposed in that area. Just some of the previous comments that were made, I made some notes where I do feel like it would be overbuilt, and I don't feel like this community really is consistent with our homes that have, like we've lived in for forty years that have been in this region. And I have spoken against this previously, and even more so tonight with our air quality, and we do need some green spaces in Clayton County. We do need some trees, and we don't need everything cleared and pure-cut. And I'm all for, I used to live in a townhome in Duluth at Woodhaven, and we had a walking track, we had a swimming pool, we had, you know, I went and fed the ducks, and just numerous area. So, I mean, I love townhome communities. I lived there, worked for AT&T and Alpharetta, and so I'm not against townhomes. But I just feel that both sides of this road, and it used to be the one thirty-eight spur, and maybe before it became the major highway, like she was saying, you know, now it's considered one thirty-eight. But I don't think the original proposal and the cut-through of this forestry land was intended for these, you know, businesses, townhomes, mixed-use communities. And I am all for restaurants and hotels coming into this area and business. We do need the tax dollars. And I will end by saying something off-subject, if I'm allowed, but they have come and cleaned up Bambi Lane again. We're so appreciative of the gutters and the trash. I don't know why people consider that end of that road such a dumping ground, but just recently, they came up, they picked up the litter, they cleared out the drainage because there's a very large dip in that. And with all the flooding we've seen in Vermont and the concerns of different areas, I'm just amazed that you think it can't happen in your area, but I'm so thankful, you know, for our area, that we, we are cleaning up Clayton and that we do have people that are concerned about drainage. And, and our city is not dealing with like, I visited Mount Puller in Vermont. It's a beautiful city. And I'm just getting emotional about what those people have had to deal with, with, you know, and I don't know if theirs has to do with if they should dredge out the, you know, the rivers, or if they've cut too many trees, or I'm not an infrastructure, you know, planner. But anyway, thank you so much for your time and your attention, and please continue to deny this proposal. Our community will appreciate it.
Ma'am, unfortunately, there's no more time left for...
I'm so sorry.
For speaking opposition, there's no more time left. Ms. Battle, you have your three minutes.
I certainly appreciate the passion of the speakers who have been here speaking in opposition. The truth of the matter is, based on the comments that we have received, particularly from the surrounding community as well as here from the board, that while density is a component, density is a component of the M I X, part of this property is already zoned M I X. Somebody can come in here tomorrow and put that apartment complex. It would be what it is. The infrastructure, the support services and the like that have been discussed and the challenges that you all are facing are things that the adjacent property, adjacent community said, "They don't want anything like that. They would rather it stay green space if it had to stay anything." I don't think that they're looking for a pure mixed-use kind of development to be on this site. And not to mention the fact that this is, there is a, there's no ability to turn left immediately into this site off of one thirty-eight, which makes it much more difficult for retailers to be in this space. You would look at that type of a mixed-use product coming further down along the corridor, maybe closer down into the more intense in the commercial corridor. But we're not in a commercial corridor right here. That mixed-use that's on the property now, in my opinion, is really kind of misplaced because it does not, this site does not lend itself with the buffers that would be adjacent, particularly with the existing R S one-ten. That is a single-family detached product. Portions of that property are hard to develop. What we are trying to do is bring a product in that will help support the type of commercial development that the county would like to see along this corridor. And my opinion is closer in to the intersection and not in the space that we are looking at right now. I am all for mixed-use developments. I am all for thinking creatively. We believe that this site, particularly when we're abutting up against these single-family detached homes, is a much better option than putting a high-intensity commercial development against this community that is already concerned about the impact of traffic as well as accessibility, safety. There are current concerns raised about folks being able to come through the site to get into their residential community through the woods or whatever. And so there were, there are real issues here that we think need to be addressed, but we feel that the townhome community is a much better option than looking at the current M I X that's on the site now. And so I get that I am not a popular person tonight, but it is, it is what it is.
Let's be respectful, please.
It's okay. I feel them. We all have, we all have our opinions and thoughts. So we appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Battle. Commissioner Davis.
Attorney Battle, you've always, we've always had very respectful talks, and I truly appreciate what you've done and how you do it. And I will always respect the ability for business owners to come in and develop. And I will always respect the ability for business owners to come in and develop projects and develop for-profit businesses in order to help us increase the viability of Clayton County. The concerns I have, and I still have them, we're short roughly fifty, or fifty to eighty, of our first responders. This project adds added stress to the performance of those first responders. We also have, I also ask this question, could that product sustain or help support the home values that are roughly a half mile to a mile away? I don't believe that to be true. For that, these reasons, as well as some of the others, I have to respectfully move to deny this project.
Is there a second? A second to motion, are there any questions? Here and none, those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Our next item is item twenty-nine, BOC twenty-one-ten dash zero-one-five-nine, to amend the map from MVR to HDR.
This is a request by Battle Law PC to amend the future land use map category for fifteen-sixty-five, Highway 138, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero-two-three-six, from medium-density residential to high-density residential for a single-family attached townhome development. Said property consisting of eleven point six-nine acres is located between North McDonough Street and Stockbridge Road, is in the east-west Highway 138 corridor overlay district, and is further known as parcel twelve zero-four-seven C A zero-zero-one. Staff's recommendation is denied, ZAGG's recommendation is denied.
Try not to take up much time again. Obviously, I will restate, huh?
Rebuttal minute.
No, that's okay. I will restate the comments previously made. Once again, we feel that the denial, in part based on the challenges that county is having with its emergency services, is not a basis, not a legal basis for the denial of the application. We also believe that the proposed project is consistent with the overall intent of the comprehensive plan and that the denial would not be sustainable in regards to looking at the current comp plan. The mixed-use designation in terms of high-density residential are comparable in terms of the number of units that would be allowed. And therefore, again, we would respectfully request approval of the application as presented by the applicant. Thank you.
This is public hearing. Anyone would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Come forward, ma'am.
Yes, hello, everyone. My name is Mary Haynes, and I live at eight zero zero six Aloha Drive, Jonesboro, Georgia. I live in the Ballyhigh subdivision that is right there next to the forest that separates us from 138. I would like to reinforce what Helen Whitlock said earlier, and, you know, we're all for Clayton County to grow and to do well. And, but with this particular request, I have concerns. I do not think that Clayton County has enough utilities possibly. I know we have garbage pickup issues. I have called the number before and gotten a very good response of people dumping mattresses, old furniture, and garbage along Cross Road that is between 138 and North Avenue. And, you know, it was taken care of, but I thought, you know, this kind of dumping, we're going to see an increase if we increase our population greatly, like nine hundred, I mean, three hundred ninety-six people with the proposition of developing these one hundred thirty-two townhomes that have three bedrooms each. And it's going to be a real stress on our police, fire department, our medical services. And also, I worry about good teachers being in our county to take care of the young children that are going to be coming into this influx of private townhomes. And also, I'm concerned about the destroying of our trees, of our natural habitat, you know, oxygen-producing, you know, necessary for all of our lives. But our deer and rabbits I've seen, and birds in our ecosystem, that's going to be destroyed if one hundred thirty-two homes are allowed to be built. And also, the other thing that I have concern about, when these townhomes, if they would be bought for the high price, which is the going price, I guess, in society today, but that after they would be bought, what prevents them, switching them over to rental homes? And how to prevent legally any such switch? And once people, I'm not going to point fingers, but the truth be known, people who buy the land, who build the homes, their job's done. They will not stay and take care of business. And so I thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition to?
I don't understand why the housing that they want to propose has to be such small square footage. And I don't know where Ms. Battle has driven on 138, but from the bus barn, that is called, it used to be called the Spurs, now called Spivey Parkway. Once you go down there and then take a left and go to 138 towards the interstate, it's all subdivision. I live in the subdivision that will be adjacent to this proposal. It's called Sunnydale Lane. It's a cul-de-sac. There's twenty-eight houses in there. We do have all the trees and woods, and our concern is, and there's about six or seven of us from the neighborhood that's here, our concern is, is the foot traffic and car traffic. Because you know as well as I do, coming down Stockbridge Road, right there where the intersection of 138 and Walt Stevens is, people ain't going to want to go ahead and sit there in traffic. They're going to come down through our street and go ahead and use our street as a way to get to the subdivision. We have mentioned before about the green space. I walk my dogs out every night. I hear coyotes, I hear owls, we have rabbits, we have possums, we have squirrels, we have a bunch of deer. There used to be a spring back over there, years ago, before y'all were even around, used to be called Rock Hill Park. It was a spring-fed water park. It was in conjunction with Atlanta Beach, Terra Boulevard. It used to be a skating rink there. The building for the skating rink is still there. It used to be a little area for people to come in and go swimming during the day and then go skating at night, and there's a cover area there that they could use for barbecue. But with a hundred and thirty-two homes, you know the crime is going to go up. I don't care, and I don't understand where she says that that area is used for townhomes. You've got, like the lady just said, Ballyhigh, Bambi Lane, all that over there that's got all those houses, and then right behind your backyard, you want to have those townhomes? I don't think so. So in other words, you're going to come down Jonesboro, 138, you're going to see all them townhomes, and then you're going to hit 138 and Stockbridge Road. I appreciate Mr. Davis denying this, and I hope that we keep on denying this until somebody decides, well, if we're going to develop into residential, let's make it decent-sized homes where we don't have a hundred and thirty-two families junked up together, combined together. Because that, we will be causing, we will be having some crime rate. So, thank you very much.
Sir, if you would, state your name for us.
Michael Montroy. I've been in Clayton County since nineteen sixty-one. I was a high school teacher at Forest Park High School. And then I've been living in Sunnydale Lane since nineteen eighty, since nineteen eighty-three. So I have seen this area of Clayton County change and grow up. I used to be a volunteer for the Clayton County Humane Society until I got injured and was, could no longer go ahead and take care of that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? Anybody else? Commissioner Davis?
My name is Robert Chase, and I live at eighty-one ninety-two Sunnydale Lane. I'm against this development as well. We have a beautiful amount of wildlife in our area. I'm concerned that basically taking out all these trees are going to take the homes of all these animals and that we love to see in our neighborhood as well. Increased traffic, increased potential for crime, and, you know, we're going to be looking at the side of a very large building instead of trees, and I just don't want to see that. So I'm against this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Yes, good evening. My name is Cora Balbosa. I also live on Sunnydale Lane. My husband and I just made a purchase last year. We didn't buy a house on that quiet street to be interrupted by what they're proposing. We do, we love the green space. We like looking at the animals and, you know, and it's quiet. I am concerned about the foot traffic and the possibility of increase in crime. So thank you for your continued denial, and thank y'all for listening.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good to see you, Ms. Cora.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? Anybody else? All right, Commissioner Davis.
Well, we're hearing from the community. It's always good to have community involvement. On, which one, I'm looking to find out which one we're here, on BOC twenty-two-eleven dash zero-two-sixty-one, I move that we deny this motion.
Is there a second?
I second it.
No, not that one.
Mr. Chair.
Wait a minute.
Twenty, it's twenty-one-ten, zero-one-five-nine.
Get these to him.
I'm sorry.
Get that to him right here.
Okay, you all forgive that now. I move that we deny BOC twenty-one-ten dash zero-one-five-nine.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next.
Next item, item thirty, BOC twenty-two-eleven dash zero-two-sixty-one.
This is a request on the other side of Highway 138 by Battle Law PC to amend the future land use map category for fifteen-eighty, Highway 138, Jonesboro, Georgia, three zero-two-three-six, from mixed-use to high-density residential for a single-family attached townhome development. Said property consisting of plus or minus six point five acres is located between North McDonough Street and Stockbridge Road, is in the east-west Highway 138 corridor overlay district, and is further known as parcel one, parcel twelve zero-one-eight A A zero-zero-seven. And staff's recommendation is denied, same as ZAGG's recommendation.
Michelle Battle, thirty-five sixty-two, Haverchamet, Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, three zero-zero-eight-four. You know, as we go through and I listen to the hearings and the comments from the community, it's very clear that the desire would be for this property remain as is. And the truth of the matter is, we know it's not. I mean, as much as it would be wonderful if it could stay green space and trees, somebody owns this land, and they are interested in selling this land. And unless the county is interested in buying this land as a park, something is going to happen with it. The question is, how much input will the community have over what happens to it if it is developed as it is currently zoned? What we know about the piece of property and those who are on, for example, Sunnydale Lane, that they may not recognize is this property is currently zoned MIX. That zoning allows for someone to come in and develop both commercially and residentially on this lot. They will not have to come through this process. They will simply acquire the property and develop it, and you'll see the bulldozers come, and it'll be what it is. The beauty of this process, quite honestly, is that it gives us the opportunity to come before this board and before the community to try and work towards a common goal and to work towards having something that the community actually has a little bit more input into as opposed to waking up one morning and all they do is see trees gone. I've been in that space myself, I've seen communities go through that, and it's harrowing because you think you go through this process and that means nothing's going to happen, and that's not what this means. It just means that if you develop it as it's currently zoned, you don't have to come through this process. We know that there is property here that is currently zoned RS-110. Those are for single-family detached homes. There's not a lot of people that want to live in single-family detached homes with their only point of entrance off of 138, particularly at the price point that the homes would have to be at. The infrastructure is the same. I tell people this all the time, the infrastructure doesn't change. It's the cost of what's in there that's going to change. The fewer homes you have, the higher the price point has to be on the house, because the infrastructure doesn't change. How much it costs to put that road in and put the utilities in and the other things in. On this side of the street, we are proposing forty-five units. Forty-five townhome units with buffers around the perimeter, with a preserving, the stream buffer, as already indicated. Yes, we are moving into the RS-100 area, but we are butted on that side by the stream. There's no single-family houses on that side of us. What we're talking about is an entrance solely off of Highway 138, not coming off of Sunnydale. We're not trying to enter into that community. But the truth of the matter is, if somebody comes along here and desired to cross over there and connect into that space, they could, but that wasn't what we had proposed to do. We had a cul-de-sac there. So we are very clear that the community does not want this and that the board is voting against it. We get that. Yet at the same time, we have to point out what the truth is on at least what it is currently zoned and what can be done on it as currently zoned. I'm not, there's no threats there, it's just the reality of what is currently on site that can be utilized on the property. And quite honestly, because it's zoned MIX and because of the site challenges on it, anybody that would develop would have to go up. They would not go out, which now means that you've got some height issues that will also come into play for those who are living adjacent, certainly on this side off of Sunnydale. So we respectfully, again, would have requested approval. We understand that that is not going to happen tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to come before the board and continue to put forth our position, and we hope that at some point we will be able to find a path forward, but it does not sound like that path forward is today. Thank you.
All right, it's public hearing. Anybody would like to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor of? Anybody in opposition to?
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman. My name is Jean-Claude, Jean-Claude Bourget. I just heard what the attorney stated, and she's absolutely correct, that somebody can actually come and buy the property. So I'm saying to us, as the Commissioners, why don't we be strategic about it and simply purchase the land? And then we decide, because we heard what the community wants to do, we know that they don't want to do it like that, but why don't we design what it is that we want for the community and Clayton County as opposed to allowing somebody to just simply come in come in and do what they want to do? That's my point.
Thank you.
And I'm at eighty-four nine Waverly Drive, Jonesburg, Georgia. Thanks.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? Anybody else? Commissioner Davis.
Thank you for that, that comment. And like I said, we want to keep all options open on the table all the time. And also, Attorney Battle is correct. Someone can come in here and begin to build or propose to build something else, but that's what we're here for, is to voice our opinion and to bring in to this community something that is going to uplift this community. So, that's what our job is, not only me as a Commissioner, but me as a resident as well. So, for that reason, and, and again, something that was stated earlier, it is not about the total stress on our infrastructure is why we deny. That is just one of the many variables that makes the decision, that comes into making that decision. For this reason, let me see if I can get this one right this time. Move to deny BOC twenty-two eleven dash zero two six one.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second the motion. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Next item, thirty-one, BOC twenty-two ten dash zero two five four, which is a rezone from RS one ten to RM.
This is requests regarding fifteen thirty-five and fifteen sixty-five Highway, Highway one thirty-eight, Jonesburg, Georgia, three zero two three six, for a single-family detached townhome development. This specific proposal is for tract B, which is proposed in aid to save townhomes on fifteen point oh six acres on the east side of Highway one thirty-eight. This property is in the east-west Highway one thirty corridor overlay district and is further known as parcels twelve zero four seven C, A zero zero one, and twelve zero four seven CF zero zero one.
It's Battle.
Again, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, sixty-five, thirty-five sixty-two, Havershamet, North Lake, Tucker, Georgia, thirty, three zero zero eight four. I think what's interesting about this particular zoning request is that the current RS one ten is not consistent with the MIX land use designation. Therefore, we believe that we are well within our rights to ask for the RM. The requested previously was denied to change from MIX to high-density residential. Again, the density difference, there is none. It is the same. The density that we are proposing is significantly less than the sixteen units per acre. I believe that is allowed under the MIX designation, as well as the high-density residential designation that we had asked for. There is no question that RS one ten, which is a single-family detached residential land, zoning designation, is not consistent with the MIX land use designation, and therefore it's inappropriate to leave it as such. Therefore, we will request again that despite what has transpired before, that the property be allowed to be rezoned, at least to be consistent with the existing land use designation, obviously subject to the change that we had previously requested to amend to high-density. But again, the RS one ten is inconsistent with the current land use designation, and therefore, we are also baffled as to why staff recommended denial when the property, again, is not consistent. Thank you.
Public hearing, anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody like to speak in opposition? Commissioner Davis.
I move that we deny BOC twenty-two eleven dash zero two five seven. No, I'm sorry, I'm the wrong one. My fault, again.
You own.
I might need somebody's glasses and phone.
Zero.
Move to BOC twenty-two ten, dash zero two five four.
Sure. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good night.
Good night.
I have a question on that. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
I have a question on it. I'm considering that this item has been moved month after month after month to the agenda, and it's been understood where we're going. Do we have to continue to listen to?
We got to have a public hearing.
We do have to have all of them?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to know. Or can they just, oh, yeah?
Can they lump them together? You got to have individual public hearings for each request. Please proceed, sir.
BOC dash twenty-two eleven dash zero two six two, which is a request by Battle Law PC to rezonate fifteen eighty, Highway one thirty-eight, Jonesburg, Georgia, three zero two three six, from MX to RM, for seeing family attached townhome development. Said property consisting of six point five acres is located between North McDonough Street and Stockbridge Road, is in the east-west Highway one thirty-eight corridor overlay district, and is further known as parcel twelve zero one eight A, A zero zero seven. And this is for the tract A, for the west side of Highway one thirty-eight, which is a proposal for forty-five townhomes on thirteen point four eight acres. And staff's recommendation was denial, so as Zag's.
Final time. Michelle Battle, Battle Law, thirty-five sixty-two, Havershamet, North Lake, three zero zero eight four. Again, the current land use actually on this site in the MIX, I guess is one instance where we actually have some consistency there. However, it then begs the question as to why we are not allowed to seek a rezoning to RM, which would allow for a density that is more intense than what is currently allowed on the site. The MX zoning district allows for a mixture of uses, as stated previously, that would allow for a much higher density than the RS one ten that's adjacent to this site. We respectfully challenged the staff's position. This property, again, has been up for sale for quite some time. There have been no buyers who have been seeking to develop under the current zoning designations, and therefore, we again respectfully request that these applications, and this one in particular, be approved despite what has transpired previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Commissioner Davis.
Move that we deny BOC twenty-two eleven dash zero two six two.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Next item, item thirty-three, BOC twenty-two eleven dash zero two five seven, which is a conditional use permit request to operate a C store without a fueling station.
So, this is a request by Rajab Kotadia for a conditional use permit to operate C store with a fueling station at ten oh four Mount Sinai Road, Georgia, three zero two six zero, which is in the GB General Business zoning district. Said property consisting of zero point two five seven acres is further known as parcel thirteen one forty-five A, D zero zero eight, and located between Airport Drive and Lake Drive personal place. We have already had the public hearing on this project. Staff's recommendation at the time of Zag was approval with recommendation.
With condition.
Approval with conditions. Thank you. Zag's recommendation was denied due to that cannot being present.
All right, and we've already had a public hearing on this, so this Commissioner Davis. Popular tonight.
Is the applicant present tonight? Because I, I did have another condition to put with this. So, how do I move forward with that?
Well, do you want to move forward regardless? I mean, unless you're going to approve it.
Then I was. But I had another condition. So, I, do we table it because they're not here to accept that?
If you want to add another condition, it probably would be good to table it so that they can agree to that extra condition.
Okay. Then I move that we table BOC twenty-two zero, twenty-three zero three dash zero two eight eight until, what is our board meeting?
August fifteenth.
Until August fifteenth.
There a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Next item, item thirty-four, BOC twenty-two ten dash zero two five one, which is a conditional use permit request to operate a vehicle window tinting shop.
This is a request by Michael Johnson for a conditional use permit to operate a vehicle renting, vehicle window tinting shop, automobile service station at seven five nine Highway one thirty-eight, Jonesburg, Georgia, three zero two three six, which is in the GB General Business zoning district. And North Terra Boulevard overlay district, said property consisting of plus or minus zero point nine and eight acres, is further known as parcel thirteen two one ten, D, A zero zero eight, and located between Terra Boulevard and Gross World Parkway. Staff's recommendation was approval with conditions. Zag's recommendation was approval with conditions, and we have already held the public hearing for this case.
Put a record, read through the conditions again.
First condition was building facade revitalization, painting in new signage. Second was repave parking lot and restriping. Third was landscaping on front, landscaping on frontage to screen work base from public view. Four was no storage of vehicles on property. And five was apply for variance for rear parking and landscape islands requirement per North Terra Boulevard overlay district.
All right, Commissioner Davis.
I move, I actually visited.
Hold on a second. Is the applicant present? Please come forward, sir. Have anything further you would like to state, and are you in agreeance with the conditions that stated?
Yes, I'm in agreeance.
Anything else you would like to add?
No, not that I can think of.
Okay.
Great, thank you. And I did visit not only that store that was given the address, I went to another one of their sites, and I'll be honest, I couldn't find anything wrong with them, to be honest. So, it is a very clean and reputable business, not something that we have in Clayton County. But I would like to add another condition here, which is make sure that is clean, everything is clean and cut all the way to the curb, and I believe that will take some of the stress off of us as far as keeping that property clean all the way down to the curb.
Okay. You in agreeance with that?
Yes.
I move that we approve BOC twenty-two ten dash zero two five one.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you all. And sorry for blowing you up all the time.
Next item is item number thirty-five, BOC twenty-three zero three dash zero two eight eight, which is a rezone from RS one ten to GB for a convenience store with gas, diesel sales, and a restaurant.
This is a request by Hector Rocker, Jordan PC to rezonate twenty-seven seventy-four, twenty-seven eighty-four, twenty-seven ninety-four, twenty-eight oh four, twenty-eight fourteen, Forest Park, Ray Allenwood, Georgia, three zero two nine four, from RS one ten single-family residential to GB General Business for a convenience store with gas and diesel sales and restaurant. Said property consisting of plus or minus three point oh four acres is further known as parcels twelve one eight A, sorry, twelve one eight two A B zero zero four, twelve one eight two A B zero zero five, twelve eight two A B zero zero five A, twelve one, twelve one eight two A B zero zero six, twelve one eight two A B zero zero seven. Said property is in the Highway forty-two overlay district, is in the mixed-use commercial-industrial future land use category, and located between Old Grant Road and Interstate six seventy-five. This does have a companion conditional use permit. This is the site plan that is provided on seven thirteen, twenty twenty-three, showing the convenience store to the left, which is west, and then the retail store to the right, which is east. This is the site plan that is shown at the seven fifteen, twenty twenty-three community meeting on Saturday, where both of these buildings are in the center. The convenience store, sorry, yeah, convenience store with gas sales is on the right-hand side of the property closer to I six seventy-five. This is the elevations. This is the old rendering for the previously requested building. Okay. Zag's recommendation was denied for the following reasons: will adversely affect the usability of adjacent properties. The proposed rezoning to GB is not in conformity with the future land use map of the twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan. The area is saturated with gas station already, and another one would not provide any economy value. However, planning zoning sustainability is amending the staff's recommendation to BOC as a result of community participation in modified uses in the proposed project. As a result, staff is recommending approval for the following, per the following conditions. First is Restaurant One, Ponker Chicken will be added on the lot. Second is Restaurant Two, Tim Horton's Restaurant will be added, will be an added amenity on the lot. Three, thirty-five hundred square feet will be utilized by the restaurants, Tim Horton's and Ponker Chicken, in which each restaurant will take up thirty-seven hundred and fifty square feet. No more than six gas pump islands will be allowed on the gas station side. A total of sixteen EV charging stations will be included throughout the lot. No diesel truck pumps on the lot. Four thousand square foot standalone building for the, the convenience store with amenities. Restaurants improvement will be closer to the school site, and restaurants are built first before the gas stakes in is built.
All right, is the applicant present? Please state your name, Mr. Heck, and if you want to reserve any minutes for everybody.
I will reserve two minutes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I hope you're well. Appreciate you allowing us to talk. Greg Heck, two oh five Corporate Center Drive, Stockbridge, Georgia, three oh two eight one. I will be brief and short. On this particular site, we have worked very hard since the Zag hearing to try and work on improvements and changes with the community. We've met twice with the community since, and have gone through and agreed to these recommendations and conditions. As you know, we are asking both for a rezoning from RS one ten to GB. There'll be a CUP request also following this. We incorporate in both hearings that the two filings, you should have copies of that site plan that was put up there, and you should have a constitutional notice. I apologize for that, you know, lawyers. This is approximately three plus acres of vacant property. The property plan shows an upper-class grade A facility. We work with the community, and as you saw, we've added all these electric charging stations so that you can keep up with the new type of vehicle that's coming into Georgia, which Georgia is becoming an electrical vehicle state. You also see the limited gas outlets as well now, and you... and you've seen a massive revision also in terms of the restaurant. We also have here, we have ownership here in Chris, uh, Hoosley here. We also have Steve DeLonga here. We also have Echo Wilmot, who's actually Executive Vice President and CFO of Ponco Chicken, who is interested enough to come and say, "We're interested in the site," and basically, we believe this is a project of great quality. I want to also note, of course, that this is also a property that is well-suited for this use. There's a similarly situated property for a similarly situated property owner with a similar use, and thus, therefore, we have to request that our equal protection, property due process, and taking rights be preserved under law. As a result, we request that rezoning of the property is given in accordance with G P for this designation, and we would ask for briefly for our E V P to come up, if you would, of Ponco Chicken, and we understand we have several other supporters who previously were not for this project, but now are.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, my name is Echo Wilmot. Um, I'm Officer two-eight-nine-six, Chambi Tucker Road in Atlanta. So Ponco Chicken is a Georgia-based restaurant, um, specifically in Atlanta. We've been around for over twenty years. Uh, most of our properties, um, are north of Midtown Atlanta, and, um, we're about to open our tenth location, um, next month, and, um, we have been looking for an opportunity to come south. And, um, we are very interested in this location, and we look forward to bringing Ponco Chicken to Clayton County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all can clap, I'm happy to. Y'all know I'm happy.
Mr. Heck, was that end of your presentation?
It's end of mine, I understood there might be other folks that were gonna speak in support, but ended of our presentation.
End of your presentation. All right, this is a public hearing, so anyone like to speak in favor of applicant's request, please come forward.
Good evening, my name is Ronald Miller. Um, I live in Ellenwood, um, uh, in unincorporated Clayton County. Um, I'm, I'm taking the time out to speak on behalf of this measure, primarily, my, primarily because the owners of this business did a fantastic job of taking the time out to meet with members of the community. Um, I think what they have done represents an exemplary way to work in concert with community to ensure that although something may not meet the need that it, uh, appears to, to, to take care of, right? Given the context of future land use and things of that nature, they've come together with the community, figured out exactly what the needs are, actually took the time to tour the area with the community, and figured out exactly what it is that might be best suited for the space that is there. There's a school on the near site, um, is gonna actually work to elevate all of the assets that are in the community, and we look forward to working with them in the future to ensure that we're in an even better state, um, especially given the fact that we're moving towards E V charging, which is a huge part of the future here in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody else? All right, anybody in opposition too? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Mr. Heck, I believe you got two letters.
Thank you very little, I'm good, I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm good.
Man that knows when to stop. Uh, Dr. Anderson.
Good evening, uh, good evening, everyone. I just wanna say to the, um, Ellenwood community and all of District One and all of Clayton County, I am so happy, um, that this, um, project is going forward. Um, thank you so much for coming out. Uh, Ponco Chicken is real good, and so I wish we had something tonight, but we, we had some at our meeting, and we had our first, uh, C P U meeting in Clayton, um, in District One, and your voices were heard. And so that is what we are focusing on in Clayton County. Your voices need to be heard. And this is a way, as we move forward and we move Clayton forward, to make sure that we are bringing in quality restaurants, quality facilities that are gonna put tax dollars back into the, the county. And so, again, I just wanna say thank you to everyone, um, through, in Clayton County and throughout District One for working together as we move forward. And again, uh, I wanna thank you to the owners of the property. They were very forthcoming, um, they talked, um, they had some, they had some, um, hard times sometimes, but, um, I just wanna say, you know, again, thank you. Transparency is what we need and what we need to continue to do to move this county forward. So at this time, I move that we approve B O C twenty-three zero three dash two-zero, excuse me, dash zero-two-eight-eight, um, to rezon from, to rezon, and do I have to say all the twenty-seven-seven-four? I'm good with that? Okay, good. Um, to, um, to, from Forest Parkway, Ellenwood, from R S one-ten to G, general business for a convenience store with gas diesel sales and restaurants, and also with the conditions added.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Hold on a second, I'm just looking at this and, uh, Dr. Anderson, you said with gas and diesel, but one of the conditions is no diesel truck pumps.
So, we, that was for the, so we, we might need to take out the diesel, so we'll take, we'll put gas because we're not doing diesel. But if you have a car, so that, we gotta look at that aspect as well, so.
Well, he has it listed as no diesel.
We'll say cars, we'll say no trucks, because we're not doing, but if they're, they're not gonna be diesel at the pumps, are they?
Tractor trailer, it's just like, yeah, a diesel truck, you get a normal pump, it's not tractor trailer.
Okay, so, yeah, so we, we can specify that as, in the conditions as well.
Yes, ma'am.
You good with that, Mr. Heck?
Yeah, as I understand it, the condition would be, uh, no commercial tractor trailers, but diesel-related vehicles that are not tractor trailers are okay.
Yes, sir.
We'd be all right with that.
And please, we, we'll put that on the record.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
All right, have we got a second?
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
The next item is B O C twenty-three zero three dash zero-two-eight-nine, which is a request by Hector Walker Jordan, P C, for a condit, a conditional use permit to operate a convenience store with gas diesel sales at twenty-seven seventy-four, twenty-seven eighty-four, twenty-seven ninety-four, twenty-eight oh-four, twenty-eight fourteen, Forest Parkway, Ellenwood, Georgia, three-zero-two-nine-four. Said property, said property consisting of plus or minus three point zero-four acres, as further known as parcels, twelve-one-eight-two A B zero-zero-four, twelve-one-eight-two A B zero-zero-five, twelve-one-eight-two A B zero-zero-five A, twelve-one-eight-two A B zero-zero-six, twelve-one, twelve-one-eight-two A B zero-zero-seven. Said property is in the Horry forty-two overlay district, in the mixed-use commercial industrial future land use category, and located between Old Grant Road and Interstate six-seventy-five. Um, ZAG's recommendation was denied for the following reasons: will adversely affect the usability of adjacent properties. The proposed rezoning to G B is not in conformity with the future land use map of twenty-twenty-four comprehensive plan. The area is saturated with gas stations already, and another one would not provide any common value. Um, staff's recommendation, um, planning zoning, planning zoning and sustainability is amending the staff's recommendation to B O C as a result of community participation in modified uses in the proposed project. As a result, staff is recommending approval per the following conditions. Restaurant, uh, first is Restaurant One, Ponco Chicken will be added on the lot. Restaurant Two, Tim Horton's will be added, will be an added amenity on the lot. Thirty-five hundred square foot will be utilized by the restaurants, Tim Horton's and Ponco Chicken, in which each, each restaurant will take up thirty-seven fifty square feet. No more than six gas pump islands will be allowed on the gas station side. A total of sixteen E V charging stations will be included throughout the lot. The second is no diesel truck pumps on the lot, however, uh, diesel can be part of the gas pump island. Um, four thousand square foot standalone building for the convenience store with amenities. Restaurants improvement will be closer to the school site. Restaurants are built first before the gas station is built.
Mr. Heck.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, we appreciate your review. Um, I will incorporate what I said in the prior hearing here, including the exhibits as well that were previously presented. One note, we're, we're fine with the stipulations. I, I think they should, they're supposed to go with the rezoning. The use permit's just for the use, so I maybe, I, I mean, we're fine either way, uh, but I think it would, it's, uh, legally should be just be going with the rezoning. So other than that, I'm, I'm good.
Anybody like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor? Come forward, please.
Again, Ronald Miller, um, Ellenwood, Georgia, uh, unincorporated Clayton County. Um, again, grateful for this opportunity to have this type of project in our community. I would definitely want this, definitely not for the diesel gas pumps. Uh, I'm definitely for this situation, for this amazing situation with the conditions given as listed, not necessarily with the diesels, specifically given the fact that it's right next door to a school site. Um, it's right next to Utopian Academy, so, uh, again, great project, E V stations are amazing, but not with diesel trucks in that facility. I understand box trucks that might use regular, uh, regular gas, but not for the diesel portion of it. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition too? Anybody opposed? Dr. Anderson.
Good, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you.
I like the way he whispered that. All right, um, at this time, I move that we approve B O C twenty-three oh-three dash zero-two-eight-nine for a conditional use permit to operate a convenience store with gas, um, sales at, um, at Forest Parkway.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Does this also include the diesel?
For the non-tractor.
For, yeah, for the non-tractor, yes.
Yeah, I thought you read that in.
Yes.
That, it's not a necessary condition, but just so that it's clear that the conditional use permit is for both gas and diesel.
Diesel, okay.
Yes.
All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is item number thirty-seven. B O C twenty-three zero-two dash zero-two-eight-two. Which is to amend the future land use map category from G C to M X I.
So the applicant is rec, is requesting to table thirty-seven through forty-three. Sorry, forty-four.
Forty-four, thirty-seven through forty-four.
Yes, sir.
Is that your request, Mr. Heck?
For sixty days to September nineteenth.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We, we, we met with the Commissioner, we met with staff. We, uh, we are, we have listened, and we are trying to figure out the best response to work on the project, just like, just like in this other project. So we're working on plans, uh, trying to find something that, uh, community likes and that the Commissioner likes.
Commissioner Davis, how would you like to move forward?
Uh, go ahead and accept that, uh, motion and move to table, um, items thirty-seven through forty-four, which is B O C twenty-three zero-two dash zero-two-eight-two through B O C twenty-three, twenty-three zero-three dash zero-three-hundred. Can I do it that way?
Until when? Until when?
I'm sorry, until, uh, September nineteenth.
All right, is there a second? Oh, second by Commissioner Hamburg, are there any questions in reference to any of the items tabled? Hearing on those, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Item, item number forty-six is B O C dash twenty-three zero-five dash zero-three-one-four.
We're on forty-five.
You gotta do forty-five first.
Thank you, forty-five. Um, B O C dash twenty-three zero-four dash zero-three-zero-eight, which is a requ, a request by Creative Community Concepts LLC for a conditional use permit to operate a boutique hotel at thirty-one forty Inver Block Road, Ellenwood, Georgia, three-zero-two-nine-four. Said property consisting of plus or minus six point seven-two acres, as further known as parcel, twelve-two-three-four D A zero-zero-one. Said property is in the mixed-use M U area of the Ellenwood P U D, Transunit Development, and located between Lunsford Drive and Border Crest Road. This is actually directly to the south of the FedEx, um, warehouse building. Planning zoning and system. Sorry about that. Um, planning zoning and sustainability is amending the staff's recommendation to B O C as a result of the July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three community meeting on Saturday on the proposed project. As a result, staff is recommending that this project be tabled. Forty-five and forty-six, yes.
Is the applicant present?
Good evening, Chairman and Vice Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Raquel Obumba. I am a resident of District One in Ellenwood. Um, I am the applicant assisting the owner of this property with the, um, the Grand G M venue and hotel. This is a project, is a proposed mixed-use development, which would include event spaces, three upscale restaurants, fifty hotel rooms, and a spa. The hotel rooms will allow guests of events at the property to, the opportunity to stay onsite before and after, uh, events onsite. Since most events will happen during the weekend, the hotel rooms will be marketed to executives visiting the local warehouses and movie studios, and allow them the opportunity to stay within close proximity of the sites. The hotel will be an upscale hotel and not offer extended stay options. The project will serve as a catalyst and example to the adjacent property owners of the type of developments the community wants to see. This project will create approximately a hundred to a hundred and fifty jobs, and those jobs include management, event staff, restaurant staff, spa staff, and security staff. The parking lot and rear exterior of the building will be well-lit, um, per the plan submitted with the site plan. Um, there is approximately fifty exterior surveillance cameras monitoring the exterior of the property. The security re-plan will include interior monitoring and of the building, which would include the hallways of the hotel rooms, restaurants, event spaces, and common areas. Um, during large events, we will ensure that there's proper onsite security to provide an additional level of security and ensure the safety of the guests and attendees. And hotel rooms will be protected by a door, which can only be opened using an activated hotel key to prevent wanderers and uninvited guests from wandering near the hotel rooms. Uh, we are confident this project will be an asset to the community and provide not only District One with upscale restaurants, but also be something which, um, will be an asset to Clayton County as a whole. Um, although I'm not necessarily in support of tabling it, um, we welcome your support of these addition, these conditional use permits. We'll follow the conditions, we'll exceed those conditions, um, and we look to, once we get the approval for these conditional use permits, look to finalize the plans for the building and the operations, um, to ensure that this is a successful project.
Okay, so before we have the public hearing, the tables recommendation, that staff's recommendations to table it. Commissioner, uh, Anderson, how would you like to proceed with the public hearing or to table it?
I would like to table it at this time. There are some further questions that, um, staff has as well as the community. Um, so, uh, we have met, and like I said, we definitely, um, love the concept. However, there are some, uh, there needs to be further discussion, um, with the applicant, and then we can go forward from there.
Are you in grants with tabling it?
It will be tabled to August fifteenth.
If I have to. If I, I guess, yeah, I have to.
So what is your motion, uh?
To, um, table it to August fifteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was 45 and 46. That concludes the agenda. The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given-
Hold on a second, Madam Clerk. Did we do 46?
I asked him if that, if the table request was 45 and 46, and he did say yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Go ahead.
Um, the board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes maximum time limit to speak before the board with a total time of 20 minutes for public comments. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Christopher Gallagher.
How you doing, Chairman, Commissioners? Christopher Gallagher, Clayton County. I want to talk to you. We're, we're in crazy times right now. There, law enforcement has a very hard job there. They get criticized a lot, but they're the first one to run in when there's danger and that, and we need to make sure that we have adequate counseling for them after they've been through things like shooting or traumatic event there. And also, we need to make sure that if our officers, you know, sheriff deputies, if they're wounded, you know, in the line of duty there, and they have a disability and can't return back to full work there, that like, we could give them a job, something like in the evidence room or something, and they don't try to squeeze them out, find a way to get them off the payroll. We need to do this. We need to work to let them know that they're appreciated, you know. A lot of them going to, just because I always wanted to be in law enforcement, help people, and we have to make sure that we're there for them when they get wounded, if they're dealing with stress issues or whatever, family problems at home there, and that we have to show them that, you know, they're appreciated, that they do matter to us, and that they do have value to our community there, and that we do appreciate the hard job. They do, they go out putting their lives on the line every day. They don't know if they're gonna come home and see their family there, and a lot of times when they're out, they have people, you know, flicking them off, they're talking nasty to them and that, and they're just trying to do their job and keep us safe, but we need to make sure that we're out there and we have programs that can back them up and that can help them out if they need it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for your, for your words and your encouragement and support. I definitely will reassure you that the public safety folks take that serious, especially the mental health aspect of it, and they do also have light duty positions that if they're hurt, injured, whether it's temporary or long-term, they look at that, and they have light duty positions for those folks. We definitely love and appreciate all that the men and women do here protecting us in our county, and we're gonna definitely do all we can to make sure we take care of our family.
I'm glad to hear that.
Chairman? Commissioner Davis.
I'd also like to say this, in regards to Mr. Gallagher's comments. This shows why we need a hospital in Clayton County, and Southern Regional responded to that injured officer in a very, very good way. And so I think this is one of the reasons why we need hospitals, and we need to fight to keep these hospitals in our county.
Wayne Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I was gonna speak about one thing, and I am, but I wanted to say, the young lady with the idea with the boutique hotel and stuff, one of the questions should be, make sure she's capitalized. Otherwise, it's just a bunch of empty hoes. Make sure that it's viable financially, not one of those pie in the sky. What was that, the one, what, five hundred thousand? Yeah, make sure it's real money. But this is what I want to say. I'm proud of Chief Roberts. I'm proud that you all apprehended that guy, where you can get some answers from him, and you didn't kill him. Because, you know, as a black man, I get a little concerned anytime police chasing us for whatever the reason. For them to apprehend that guy, so we can get some answers to some of the questions, it's gonna be more beneficial than reading, "He killed this girl and died in a blaze of fire." And I pray for the officers to get hurt, and I'll do anything I can to help them, and I'm proud to be a Clayton, Clayton Countyan, but please make sure they capitalize enough.
Thank you, sir. Mickey Garber.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and fellow citizens, I am disappointed on your vote on Resolution 2023-159. Let me state, Nestle Chocolate, Coca-Cola, Almond Joy, Three Musketeers, Delta Airlines, and Toyota Motors all have one thing in common. All are brands which are well-respected and well-promoted and well-protected. Our new brand, we spent a lot of time and money to develop and to, and a lot of money to develop, and our brand by not putting our decals to promote ourselves on our vehicles. We are racing to keep ourselves as a Tier One County. If the top echelon of our government won't promote our brand by riding with pride with our new logo and new brand, how can you expect the residents of our county to have pride and promote our county? I have perused the information here for, for who should get the decal resumption, and I'm running out of time, but I have marked off the ones that I think should ride without the decal. Officer, if you would present this to the Commissioners, I would thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Della Ashley.
Hi, I'm glad to be here this evening. I'm Della Ashley from Clayton County, from what I like to call Jonesboro West, west, west side of, of the county. I concur with a lot of the comments that were made at the beginning of the Commissioners' meeting. I am strongly concerned about the appearance of our roadways and our parks as well, and I do believe if there was a, you know, aimed goal, if there was a concerted effort, that there would be more people willing to volunteer to do, to help with those things. But, you know, we don't want to do what somebody else is supposed to be doing at the same time. You know, it's hard to know the, but I appreciate, in my area, two of the older ladies that have been consistently keeping one roadway in my area, and I occasionally help them, but then there's another roadway just nearby that just looks so awful most of the time, so I know that what they do makes a difference. So the, the beautification and the recycling too is another, I wish there, would like to see if there's a way that the recycling programs can be expanded as well. And, but I mostly haven't been to a Commissioners' meeting for a long time, and interesting to hear all the items discussed then. And I think some of us back there, a lot of us are fans of Ponco Chicken, so that was good to hear about that. So, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Swanna Janvier.
Good morning, excuse me, morning. Look, it's, it's been a long day. Good afternoon, good evening. Swanna Janvier, Clayton County. I want to take a moment and just ask that when you think, or you make the considerations for the Solicitor's Office to consider the importance of prosecutors and the job that we do. As attorneys, in order to become an attorney, it requires an undergraduate degree, three years of law school, and to pass a bar exam. It's a lot of work. And in that, a lot of people that work in our office actually live in Clayton County, as I do, and we do the work because it's, it's work of the heart. We care about our community. We care about protecting the citizens of Clayton County. And to put it mildly, we could probably make double somewhere else. And maybe working against Clayton County, we could make, you know, more money, but that's not the choice that we're making. The choice that we make is to come in each day and give, do our part to bear the community and be protectors of the citizens of Clayton County. And so we ask that you take that into consideration when you're considering what the value is of a prosecutor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Is there a need for executive session?
Yes, on litigation, personnel, and real estate.
Is there a motion to go into executive session for real estate, personnel, and litigation?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second the motion. Are there any questions?
Now, just thank you, Ms. Jean-Pierre, and your assistant, Mr. Jean-Pierre. You did a great job, Vanna.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Mr. Reed.
All right, I've got a settlement agreement in the matter of Jesus Badio relating to an accident that occurred on December 16th, 2021, and that settlement is in the amount of $35,000, and ask the Chief Financial Officer to be able to amend the budget to reflect appropriate revenue source and expense.
So a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Franklin. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Anderson. Are there any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.